Hello and welcome to the City Council meeting of January 14th. Please rise to salute the flag.
What do we need to do to look like the United States is a republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino is absent. Councilor Keefe?
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito?
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky?
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch?
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo?
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council President Guanasso?
Here.
Here, quorum is present.
Here. Madam Clerk, I got a call earlier from Councilor Janino stating that she had a business previous commitment and she had to be in attendance.
Calendar item number two and three, approval of the journals of the regular meeting of December 17th, 2018, and January 7th, 2019.
So ordered.
Calendar item number four is the introduction of the 2019 City Council Subcommittee list.
Madam Clerk, one of the duties of the President of the City Council is to appoint subcommittees, and subcommittees in my eyes are a very important part of our council makeup. We do all the tasks that are needed and required services within our community and they perform at these meetings. And every one of these chairs that I have selected come with high qualifications based on that kind of knowledge. The first being the Appointment and Personnel Administration Committee. Chairwoman Counselor Jessica Janino will be the chair, followed by counselors that will be supporting that effort, Counselor Keefe, McKenna, Morabito, and Powers. The Economic and Development Planning Committee. Counselor Morabito is the chairperson, following with Counselor Janino, Counselor McKenna, Counselor Patch, and Counselor Rizzo. Public Works. The chairwoman is Counselor McKenna. Counselor Morabito, Counselor Patch, Counselor Rotundo, and Counselor Zambudo. Elder Affairs. Counselor Powers, Chairman. Counselors Keefe, Counselor McKenna, Counselor Morabito, and Counselor Rotundo be working with John on the Elder Affairs. And Veteran Affairs Committee. Counselor Patch, Chairman. Counselor Novosowsky, Counselor Rizzo, Counselor Rotundo, and Counselor Zambudo. On Ways and Means. Counselor Rizzo, Chairman. Working with Counselor Rizzo will be Counselor Janino, Counselor Morabito, Counselor Patch, and Counselor Zambudo. Parks and Recreation Committee. Counselor George Rotundo, Chairperson. Working with George will be Counselor Janino, Counselor Keefe, Counselor Powers, Counselor Novosowsky. Zoning Subcommittee. Counselor Zambudo, Chairman. Counselor Janino, Counselor Keefe, Counselor Novosowsky, Counselor Rizzo. Legislative Affairs Committee. Counselor Keefe, Chairman. Counselor Novosowsky, Counselor Powers, Counselor Rizzo, Counselor Zambudo. And this particular committee is going to be charged with the responsibility of enacting a resident parking program. I've asked the chairperson of that committee to work with Counselor Janino and Counselor McKenna because they have previously worked with that in the legislative Subcommittee. And I think that in cooperation with that, public safety will be brought in with that also, and Counselor Novosowsky has pledged that he will be part and parcel to that. And I think that's one of the biggest things that we have facing our city this year, and it's one of the things that is one of my goals that I would like to have established. And I don't want to put much pressure on anybody, but I'd like to see it happen before May 1st. And finally, we have Public Safety Committee. Counselor Novosowsky, Chairman. Counselor McKenna, Counselor Patch, Counselor Powers, and Counselor George Rotundo. And I hope that all the chairpersons take their jobs very seriously, as I know they will, because it's a very important part of our community. And what I'm going to do is during the debates and public hearings and stuff, I'm going to limit the debate because what we want to do is get more information that we seek. So we'll send that to a Subcommittee where they can allow the time so everybody can have an input on that and to show that, you know, the serious input by our community is part of our parcel here that we want to do. So thank you for your effort on that. I'd like to also ask for a suspension of rules to allow, as we go on further, to allow for three department heads to be heard first because they have previous commitments. And I would like to take up 17, 18, and 19 at the will of the -- all in favor of that? All opposed? Suspension is in order. Madam Clerk? 7, 18, and 19, yes, please.
Calendar item number seven is communication from the mayor relative to the Department of Public Works memorandum of agreement.
Shall the City Council approve the appropriation necessary to fund the memorandum of agreement between the City of Revere and the Department of Public Works covering fiscal year 2019 to 2021? A roll call would be ordered. On the roll call.
Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, the memorandum of agreement for the DPW has been approved.
Calendar item number 18.
Calendar item number 18 is a late communication from the mayor regarding Citizens Energy Corporation contract.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Robert Mauer, Mayor Rego's Chief of Staff. I'm here on the mayor's behalf. He's at the school committee meeting tonight. What's before you tonight is a contract which is essentially an expansion of a program that the city is already involved in with Citizens Energy. And through that program, the city purchases solar-powered, solar-generated electrical power. And the city is currently involved in a 20-year contract for that purchase. What's before you tonight is the opportunity for the city to expand that program through the purchase of solar power electricity generated from two new power plants that Citizens Energy has built, one in Air, Massachusetts, another in Bridgewater, Massachusetts. And John Fester from Community Development and Emily Byrne from Citizens Energy are here to answer your questions and provide real details on how it works. Essentially, Citizens has built two new, or is in the process of completing construction of two new solar-powered plants, as I said, one in Air, one in Bridgewater. The city will purchase electricity generated from those plants and receive bill credits on electrical bills of 17 percent. Thus far, the similar program that the city has been involved in for a number of years has yielded savings of approximately $400,000 to the city. So it's expected that this will generate similar savings over the course of a number of years. In conjunction with that purchase, Citizens also provides, because this is what is called a, the construction is called a low-income community shared solar project, in conjunction with the purchase of energy by the city, Citizens is then able to offer discounted electric rates to needy families here in Revere. And it's estimated that some 150 families will be able to receive this benefit which will amount to approximately $150 per year in electrical savings. That program is separate from the contract, but by the city entering into this contract, it provides the opportunity and the resources for Citizens Energy to construct plants such as this. The discount for Citizens is similar to the oil program that Citizens Energy has run for approximately 40 years here in Massachusetts. So that is basically a brief overview. Mayor Rego supports the contract. As I said, it's a 20-year contract. Mayor Rego supports that and is hopeful that the City Council will similarly support that. And I'd like to turn it over to John Fester and Emily Byrne.
Well, I might interrupt for just one second, Mr. Mauer.
Sure.
Based on the previous history, we like to get these types of communications on the agenda, not as a late communication, one that can be digested by City Councils so we understand fully what's taking place. I have two methods either to concur with this, either go on and they got a vote tonight, always submit this to Ways and Means for their further review. It's at the will of the City Council. I know this is to the benefit of our citizens, but we also have to have an understanding of what the heck it's all about.
Right.
And to get a five or six-minute presentation before the City Council in the hall, I'd rather see it go before a Ways and Means Subcommittee where people can ask the various questions that are required and necessary and get some details as to what this is all about. So rather than to belabor all this, you gave us a brief outline of this. If it's the will of the councilors, I'd like to see this go to the Ways and Means. Is that in order?
Yes, please. Yes.
Is that the will of the City Council? I refer this to Ways and Means.
For real. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 19 is communication from the Election Commissioner relative to the 2019 election calendar.
Good afternoon. I have presented to you a calendar to follow for the 2019 election year, and I'm seeking your approval for the calendar.
Any questions from the City Council? Seeing none, we could place that on file.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
Back to the regular art of business.
Calendar item number five, communication from Joseph Spinazzola, Executive Director of the Foundation Trust, relative to his grant program supporting nonprofit organizations within the social services sector.
Mr. Spinazzola, please come to the podium.
Mr. President.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much. While Mr. Spinazzola, Dr. Spinazzola, feel free to approach the podium, but I just wanted to just give a brief introduction. I'm sure he'll explain it far better than I will, but for the edification of the council, Dr. Spinazzola is the Executive Director of an organization called the Foundation Trust, and they are a charitable organization, 501(c)(3) that helps other 501(c)(3)'s throughout, at least Massachusetts. I'm not sure if it goes beyond there, but, you know, I had the chance to meet up with Mr. Spinazzola, and as a result of our conversations, he has decided that Revere would be one of the communities that would be selected to accept, that they would accept applications from any worthy organizations throughout Revere that may want to take advantage of this program or these programs that they offer. These grants, and I'm sure he'll get into it a little bit with you, are not insignificant. They go into the tens of thousands of dollars. So this is a real exciting opportunity for our community, and I just want to thank Mr. Spinazzola up front for, you know, for our conversations and for selecting Revere as one of those communities. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Rizzo. Mr. Spinazzola.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members for allowing me to speak. I am the trustee and executive director of a new philanthropic organization that was founded in 2016 by Mr. Dante D'Esso, a lifelong, for the majority of his life, a resident of Revere, passed away in the summer of 2017, at which point we, at his wishes, activated this philanthropic organization. The goal of the Foundation Trust is to support small to medium-sized nonprofits that are working to elevate marginalized and disadvantaged individuals and communities. We have three primary social service tracks. One of those tracks has to do with overcoming trauma and life adversity, so supporting programming in areas like domestic violence, in violence prevention, in mental health, in treatment services. A second category is working with youth and communities at risk to help elevate those communities through education, through sports and fitness, through wellness programs, through suicide prevention, violence prevention, that sort of arena of services. And the third social service category is to restore dignity and quality of care to adults with chronic impairments. So that track supports adults living with mental illness, adults with dementia and other cognitive impairments, or long-term physical impairments, and supporting programming to help decrease their isolation, to increase their wellness, and to increase their access to community supports. This is the first-ever grant cycle of the foundation that's launching this spring with an application process that begins in February, and we were deciding on six communities in the state of Massachusetts to initiate the foundation for this cycle. And as I mentioned, the founder was a, and his family goes back four generations, and Revere, as does the Spinazzola family, and we're the trustees of the foundation. Despite that, we wanted to ensure that our focus wasn't too narrow or, let's say, parochial, so to speak, and weren't, didn't want to just pick the communities that we knew best, but in our conversations with Counselor-at-Large Rizzo, it really became apparent the diversity of the communities being served by Revere and the extent of need that Revere was as or more worthy than any other community in Massachusetts to be selected for this initiative. I've passed out some informational materials. I have more available if anyone else didn't receive one, or if press is here and would like to speak to me afterwards. I will, you know, remain present for a while. We hope to be able to support multiple grant awards to programs that are either based in Revere or supporting your constituents of Revere. So this is really more of an informational presentation, but my only request would be that to the extent that it's appropriate and makes sense, that councilors will distribute the information to, within your wards, to worthy programs.
Sounds like a great and wonderful program. Is there any questions from any of the City Councilors? But we were --
Mr. President?
Counselor Rizzo.
If I may, just, it might be, you know, so the packets are here, and, you know, really, I think one of the reasons that Mr. Spinazzola wanted to appear here tonight is to really inform the council because they know that counselors, you know, ward counselors, at-large counselors, have that day-to-day contact within their neighborhoods and within their particular areas, you know, might be familiar with, you know, 501(c)(3)'s that are interested. But is it laid out in their packages?
It's laid out in the package and on our website, and
On how they would apply for a grant?
On how they would apply.
Okay.
And given that we're new and less well-known, you know, we've already received some inquiries from some of the other eligible communities like Lynn and Sagus, and I just wanted to make sure that Revere isn't left out.
Okay, great.
And it's
Counselor Novosowsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to Mr. Spinazzola. You related to Anthony?
Yes, my father.
Thank God I graduated high school with him. And he told me about this last fall.
Oh, great.
And I did, I think our Historical Society and the Rumney Marsh Burial Ground would be a perfect target for this package, and we did discuss it, and I'm glad you came forward because now I'll be able to give it to the new president of the Historical Society and be able to pursue, you know, what we need down at the burial grounds.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Mrs. Spinazzola, thank you, and say hello to your dad.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Please place that on file.
Calendar item number six, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Jay Masterson Construction as a licensed drainlayer.
That will go over to the Appointment Subcommittee. And I met with and spoke with Council Chairwoman Jessica Janino, and she's going to have a 545 Appointment Subcommittee on January 18th. 545 on January 18th. 28th, I'm sorry, 28th. 545.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to the council on Elder Affairs appointments.
That's going to go to the Appointment Subcommittee chaired by John Powers. I'm sorry?
Those are for appointments. You sent those, those are Elder Affairs appointments. You sent those to Elder
No, they go to the, they go to Appointment Subcommittee. All appointments go through Appointments, yeah.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the city investigate the feasibility of providing an owner-occupied tax incentive for first responders.
Counselor Rotundo? Counselor Rotundo has left the chamber. Okay. Next order of business. Leave it on the calendar until he comes back.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor Keefe that the mayor request the city engineer and the water sewer superintendent to investigate, identify, and help correct numerous water displacements and/or natural springs running off of Vane Street onto subsequent hills. The freezing runoff is posing a hazard to the neighborhood, specifically the hills connected to Vane Street.
Council Vice President Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if you've seen or if you've noticed the area of Vane or parts of even Reservoir Ave, and of course, all the south streets that come off of Vane. In this winter, when we have, we had a lot of wet fall, it seems like the water table has risen even on the hills, and I noticed a lot of freezing ice coming down the hills. Speaking to some of the residents, as, you know, I'm becoming more and more familiar with the neighborhoods, this is something that's been ongoing for a number of years. It's becoming a little bit more prevalent lately, but, you know, there's four- or five-foot wide, six-foot-wide sheets of ice that slide down these hills, going the entire length of South Irving or South Hancock, or even parts of Vane, and it's becoming, you know, it's becoming a hazard. It is a hazard. So I know that it looks like, I think we have Mr. Charmella in the audience, and I'm not sure if you wanted to speak on this, if you've done some investigations already, please, if you could, come up and help share with us. But I was just hoping that we can get to the bottom of some of it, and I know that it is nature taking its course, but if there's anything we can do to help divert some of the natural water that's coming out of these
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Don Charmella, Superintendent of Water and Sewer Department. Good evening, Council President, and good evening, councilors. So, yes, I already did quite a bit of investigation of there, so we have numerous addresses that are affected by this. So you have 302 where it's actually coming from. He was recently issued a, the ISD actually issued him a letter warning him of a violation of, you know, City Council ordinance of the discharge of, you know, water onto the public walkway. So what, I talked to, the resident is Vincent Laria, and he was willing to, you know, do whatever he can to mitigate the problem. The next-door neighbor actually also got issued a fine for this same wall of ice, but it actually doesn't come from her property, and that was 306. And the ice has actually formed in front of 310 where there's actually a disabled person in that home, causing a tremendous amount of grief. You were actually right, the swath of ice is actually five to six feet wide, it's probably about a foot and a half thick, and, you know, it's really kind of unreasonable to try to have the resident at 302 to salt and try to remove this ice. It's just too much. So I have pictures of what it is. It's a natural spring in the backyard that actually comes down from reservoir, not even, doesn't even, it doesn't even start at his property. So my question is to the councilors, what, how much responsibility do we, do we, do we put on the resident that kind of inherits a natural spring coming from his yard, not even, not even starting at his yard? So we've tested the water, it has no chlorine content in it, it is not, it's not from a pipe, it is absolutely a natural spring, but there are many in the city. So I suppose what you'd have to do is say, you know, he collects the water, so there's nothing that needs to be done there in his yard. We could, a French, a curtain drain could be installed in his yard to catch more of it, but nothing runs down from his driveway. He collects it all, he discharges it from his backyard through a pipe that he did wrongly put into the sidewalk. So I have pictures of it. These are for the councilors. There's only six copies, six packets. If you could just share them, three, three each.
Until he gets through.
So, Mr. Charmella?
Yeah.
Mayor, Mr. President, you know, I certainly have seen this property that you're talking about, and this is, the property happens to be a concern of mine. There's even more properties up, a little further up on Vane, 350 area, that they're running down the subsequent hills like I mentioned. So I'm not suggesting that, certainly I don't want to see residents being fined for water that's being displaced from their back neighbors. That's not, that's absolutely not the intention. I would suggest that as a city, we have to take some sort of action to remedy these, you know, going on a, we can't do them all, we know that, but going and prioritizing which ones, there's other springs throughout the city. I know that Counselor Novoselsky has some in the tops of his hills, believe it or not, but these springs that are freezing at night or in the winter and causing, you know, obviously safety issues. So I think that it would be important, incumbent upon us, to prioritize the most severe situations and hopefully remedy them. Of course, I don't want to see homeowners getting fined, especially, like I said, it's coming from reservoir. We all, we all know that there's been a spring running there for as long as, you know, the houses have been there.
So in this particular property, there's kind of an easy solution. There was actually recently one at the corner of Madison and Park Ave. They demolished the home, and all of a sudden, the springs started popping back up again. The owner, owner of the property actually did hire a contractor. We allowed him to put that, so we designed a little catch for the water, for the spring water, and then we allowed him to pipe it directly into the catch basin underneath the sidewalk so it doesn't, because it was running all the way down Park Avenue. So with this particular piece of property, you know, do we put the owners on the homeowner to hire a licensed drainlayer to put into the stormwater system? That's my question, I suppose. I mean, you know, I don't know
Mr. President, through you
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. You know, this is very much what happened on Fennel Street. So what was done there is they put a, we put a catch basin there, that's what should be done here. You know, that whole area on Vane Street has been like that for the past 20 years.
Right.
Same thing down on Reservoir Ave, they're historically like this. Some years they get worse, some years they don't have much, depends on the flow of the spring. So my thought would be is, what you were talking about is maybe like a channel, very much what they have on Fennel Street. From just around 80 to 300, you have little channel basins that collect the water because many of those homes also have that same problem. It's more prominent down at 300 where Border Street is, right, right there, they ended up having to put in an actual catch basin because it was just so voluminous, I mean, that you really couldn't stop that. I don't know if Joe was involved in that. If he were, Joe, going up, to the point that I think it was somewhere along like five gallons an hour or something crazy like that they were recording. It was like, signal, excuse me, Joe?
Yes, you're right, Counselor. That was, that was an ongoing issue.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Lake, Enterprise General Foreman, Department of Public Works, 34 Dartmouth Road, West Poudre, Mass. Yeah, George, that was an issue right on Border Street, and we did drop another catch basin, and we actually wanted to put, we put a pipe across the way to catch all that. If you drive by there, that's still, it's 24/7, the water comes out of there. That was an icing issue. We resolved that problem, and the superintendent's right, we have the same issue here. It's a little bit severe. The Madison Avenue situation was bad. The natural springs, you're all right, really high water content, high water levels, they pop up a lot. There's one on top of Mountain Ave, there's probably six or seven. I know Counselor Novosowsky has some in his ward. They have a problem when you have heavy rainfall. Some years you don't see them at all, some years you see them coming out of the waterboxes on Lincoln Street and areas like that. So, I mean, I think, I don't know who the owners goes on. The owners goes on the city or the owners goes on the
Mr. President, through you to Counselor Keefe, I mean, just my suggestion, I think the city should take this up. I think this is something, it's a public safety issue. Perhaps we should speak to the
We have one other speaker that'd like to speak, Mr. Counselor Morabito, and then I was going to say, if this goes on to
Committee?
Requires more attention, I think this should go before Public Works Subcommittee to get some sort of game plan in place. We can't do it tonight in a City Council meeting, but the proper forum for that would be the Public Works Subcommittee
be the Public Works Subcommittee, and after the comments of Councilor Morabito, that's what's going to be referred to as the Public Works Subcommittee. Councilor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that's a great idea, bringing it before the Subcommittee, but I think we should schedule a meeting quickly, because the winter months are coming. We're actually here, but the snow days haven't been here, knock on wood, but they're coming. First, I guess, I look at the situation, I say, as a city, this issue derives from a spring, the homeowner shouldn't take the owners of it, the burden of the cost. Also, how long of a project would this be to correct?
So this particular one is pretty simple. We have a drain main right on the, right on the street, it's not actually, you know, on his side, but, you know, the water soror drain department could very easily, without even stepping foot on his property, catch, you know, you see where the, the pipe discharges at the Batumina's curb, the Cape Cod curb, we could just cut it back to his property line, and then run a new, just a drain lateral into the stormwater system, so that he maintains his end on his property for catching the water, but he has at least a place to put it, without crossing the sidewalk, without having it dumped into the street. It would be a direct, it would be a direct lateral to right to the drain main, without any cross-country surface running at all, without any surface flow. So, it'd be easy. The only thing is, I'd like to be fair to everybody, let's identify some of these springs and maybe just do other ones in the city, where we're not actually obtaining a, a, an easement from the homeowner, that there, you know, they can collect it on their property, and then, you know, we can direct for natural springs, you know, natural springs, because, you know, it's unfortunate that he has it in his backyard, but it literally runs down from reservoirs.
Yeah, we can't set policy in a meeting like this, but this is why it requires further attention. We have one other councilor that wishes to speak, and then we're going to refer this to ways and means.
Mr. President, can I finish?
Yes, you may.
I apologize.
Well, you're in the Subcommittee of Public Works, so you could.
Correct, well, I didn't even finish, Mr. President. I, I don't feel the residents should be responsible, but I think residents have a responsibility to react and notify someone as well, but I think we should look at a long-term solution, not, and, not just a short term as well.
Thank you, Council, Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Council Morabito. I don't feel that the, the owner should have any cost, this, and I'm sure, whereas already the pipe is there, that the, most of the work is in the street anyway, so I, I will state that again at the, the meeting, I'm the Public Safety Committee, I believe.
Public.
But I, again, I want to say, I really don't feel the homeowner should be responsible. Thank you.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the chairperson of the Public Works, so I would ask the people that are on the Subcommittee to come with the list of if they have springs in their wards, because I know Beechmont has a lot too, and come with the list, and maybe we can, you know, have a solution.
Do you have a date for that Subcommittee?
We could do it right before Jessica's, so we could do it 5:00 on the 20th, if you wanted to do.
Mr. Chairman, may I, just one second? I think we should address this issue and then have a subsequent, subsequent meeting, because I think the matter at hand is what we're discussing, I think we should discuss this at Subcommittee, because it's a pressing issue.
Are we going to be able to get a resolution tonight on this issue?
No, I'm talking about for Subcommittee. I, I don't think we should bring the city as a whole before the Subcommittee.
Well, this is, this is, this takes precedent, this is going into the Subcommittee, not the city as a whole.
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. This will be referred to Public Works and, heavily handled by Chair President Joanne McKenna. Thank you. Thank you for your attendance, thank you.
May, may I ask one more thing?
Sure.
For the council? So, the violation was sent to 302, I think that maybe the, the city councils can communicate to ISD to maybe just refrain from enforcing this until we have a resolution?
Absolutely. That's only fair. And the city, give that city clerk, and we will send out a.
To the mayor.
No, right away, absolutely. Good, good request.
Mr. President, shall we send a communication through this body?
Councilor Rotundo.
Shall we send a communication through this body to the mayor, ask him that he rescinds and holds all fines relative to these issues until we have a resolution by the council?
Well, it's at the will of, it's, it's really not an action to rescind anything yet, until the Public Works meets and formulates a game plan for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, just, I want to thank the council for voting on our contract, 888 Asme's Department of Public Works, we appreciate all that you guys do for us out there, we're coming into a new era, and the Department's really moving forward, we appreciate all you.
We see that, thank you very much.
Each and every one of you, thank you.
Thank you. Next, can we revert back to calendar item number nine, Council Rotundo?
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo that the city investigate the feasibility of providing an owner-occupied tax incentive for first responders.
Council Rotundo.
I think it's a great idea to provide a financial incentive to keep firefighters and police officers in our community, and I think it's something worth passing up to the mayor to see if he would support.
How about send that to Ways and Means?
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Councilor Powers that the mayor request inspectional services to examine the property at 585 North Shore Road and remove the graffiti from the property. In addition, that graffiti be removed from the stockade fence at the Wonderland property.
Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I put this motion in because the graffiti has been on that building down there for over a month now, and it's, you know, again, it's going against everything we're trying to do in the city to make it a little nicer to look at when you're driving through. I did speak today with outside counsel who is dealing with that property, it's in litigation right now. He is going to supply us with more information as the litigation moves along, and also, he assured me that he would contact Council Farr, the owner of the property, to make sure that that graffiti is removed as quickly as possible. Thank you, Madam, Mr. President.
Any other councilors wishing to speak? Seeing none, uh, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 12 has been withdrawn at the request of Councilor Rotundo via email.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councilor Powers that the mayor direct the chief of police to arrange a meeting with the Mass. State Police Lieutenant who has the responsibility of enforcing traffic regulations on Route 1A and adjacent areas. Also, that a determination be made relative to the signage between Oak Island Street and Revere Street on its adequacy as a matter of public safety. Further, that the state police and Revere police provide more stringent enforcement of speeding on Route 1A.
Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as we all know, a couple of years ago, there was a woman killed down around John Avenue of traffic coming in from Lynn. I went down and I checked, the sign is down there, there's a, a sign down on, after, after Mills Avenue that says 50 miles per hour, which is probably reasonable if you're on that highway and there's no residents around there. And then there's a sign when you're going into Oak Island that says 40 miles per hour, and probably should be 30, 35 miles per hour slowing down when you're approaching a, a traffic signal. But what really got me was, you know, we all read the newspaper, and we're all aware of what's going on traffic-wise in the city. There was a, an accident down at the corner of Revere Street and North Shore Road just recently, within the past couple of weeks. Prior to that, two years ago, there was a car that came through that intersection southbound and hit the, the condo building down there. The crash was so severe, the nose of the car went into a bedroom where a child would normally be sleeping, okay? So, and then I looked a little further, after the traffic signal, there's a sign that says 35 miles per hour. I think that, myself, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think that there should be a, a good signal, signage-wise or illuminated, whatever it might be, when you're coming from Oak Island into the, to cross those lights on Revere Street, cars are just flying through there, they're 60, 75 miles an hour, if there's somebody crossing the street or near the sidewalk, they're going to get killed. It's, it's, it's a problem, and I think that the, probably more than the Revere police, although the Revere police does have a responsibility for speeding down there, also the state police, they, they should put up a real strong program to monitor the speed and issue citations of cars that are coming through from, from the Lynn Way, from Lynn, onto 1A and just flying. That car was going so fast a couple of weeks ago, it, it went up in the air and, and flipped over, so, I mean, these are serious problems, and it's not just one or two isolated incidents down there, it's many incidents over the past several years, and I'd like, I'd like to see the mayor have the chief of police get together with the commander of the state police barracks that is responsible down on the boulevard, and really start making sure that the signage is adequate, and also that the enforcement is adequate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. Any other councilors wishing to speak? Seeing none? All in favor, all opposed?
Excuse me.
So ordered. Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Ira Lampadakio, 43 Tapley Avenue. Speeding and inconsistency in the signage on North Shore Road has been a longstanding problem for quite some time, but what troubles me even more so is the lack of guardrails to increase the amount of public safety in that area. As you just mentioned, there was just recently an accident where a vehicle went into a building at the corner of Revere Street and North Shore Road. I'd like to see this body put forth some motions to get us all some guardrails along North Shore Road. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Councilors Rizzo and McKenna that the mayor requests, and that should read DCR as opposed to Mastod, to install additional lighting and directional guidance on the island leading onto Route 16 from Broadway adjacent to the Cronin Rink.
Council Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Very briefly, as you're coming down Broadway heading into Chelsea, there's a left-hand turn you can take to get up onto the Revere Beach Parkway by the Cronin Rink. That island, there's no real defining signage that tells people which side to go into, and although it may seem obvious, it really isn't, because people get held up, there's traffic coming the other way. It's a, it's a very easy request, I think some lighting and some directional, you know, saying, you know, enter this way as opposed to that way. So, um, and I, I, you know, I'm sure that the ward council in that area, Council McKenna would agree with that, so.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I do agree with the motion, thank you very much for putting this forward. Thank you.
Any other councilors wishing to speak? Seeing none? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Councilor Novoselsky that the mayor request the election department and inspectional services to contact property owners to remove political signs from the previous election.
Council Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, traveling around the city, there's still political signs from state and Suffolk offices that are still up on people's fences since last November. Now, we're trying to keep a city clean, they have no, they want our votes, but they have no respect for us. They leave their signs up forever, and they become ripped, hanging, and it's just disgusting. And I've asked the ISD and the election department to make an effort to contact the property owners and maybe even the, the candidates that won office or lost office, to take them down. I've spoke, I spoke to one property owner, and he said, oh, they'll be down tomorrow, well, that was two weeks ago, I'm still waiting. But I, and I try to give ISD a target of where some of the signs are, but I don't know where all, some of the councilors may know where other signs are, and hopefully they can contact ISD and our election to get this problem solved. We want to keep our city clean, and this is not doing it. So I would hope that my councilors would vote for this. Thank you.
Councilors Mbiuto.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree with my colleague wholeheartedly, I know the area he's talking about, and we had a sign up there that was taken down the day after the election, and the rest of them remain. So, there are some people that are responsible, even when they're supporting statewide candidates, that do what they're supposed to do, but that is disgusting, I was going to take them down myself, but I never got around to it, but I, it's not my responsibility, obviously, but they are an eyesore, and it's disgraceful, it's, it's, it's an insult to Revere, it really is.
Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, two weeks ago, I, I spoke with Diane Colletta, the election secretary, and she told me she would look into this. One of the areas in particular that really offended me to no end was the area at Mahoney, AKA Bell Circle. There were five or six signs on that, and the answer we got back from the DPW was it was private property, they couldn't go on there. The, they went to the business there, which is the check cashing company, and they said they didn't own the property, but, you know, there's got to be a, a plan to make sure that all of these signs are down within seven days after an election, there's no reason they should be on after, be up there after that period, it's just ridiculous, it makes the city look bad, and it, and it makes a statement to people coming through the city that perhaps the city just doesn't care, and we all do care. I know all of my signs are down probably within two or three days, and the longest time, probably a week, and it's just, it's wrong, and Diane Colletta has assured me today, and I haven't been by there yet, but she assured me today that the signs at Mahoney Circle are down. Now, I was telling me they're not, and I'm going to check that out in the morning and find out what, what's going on, because there's no reason those signs should be up there, no reason whatsoever. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, we don't need a plan, we already have a, a law on the books that states, a city ordinance that says that after X number of days, political signs have to come down, so it's not that we haven't got a, a plan in place, we just don't have enforcement of it. So, the, the legal way to, the right way to handle this is that we call Diane Colletta, who's the election, and she does whatever she has to do to get those removed. I know it's enforced when we're on a municipal election, so why isn't it done when we have a state election? It's very simple, and I'm very mindful of it, I, I tell everybody that supports me, make sure our signs are down after X number of days after the final day. So, we do have something in place, it just needs enforcement. Council McKenna.
Mr. President, thank you. Maybe we should put in the ordinance, add an amendment to the ordinance that if a, a political sign is not down within a certain period of time, that we could find them. Oh, it's in there?
There are sanctions, there are sanctions. We have to enforce that. It's just the enforcement, we have everything in place, all we need is the enforcement. Any other councilors wishing to speak?
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Councilor Keefe that the mayor request the traffic commission in conjunction with the Public Safety Subcommittee to review the feasibility of adding a crosswalk in the area of 144 Broadway.
Council Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I would like this to go in front of the Public Safety or, and/or Traffic Commission, just to look at the, the site, that area that happens to be a very popular karate school, we've got Karate Academy, there's a lot of children that cross the street and go over to Vinyl, and on top of it, when they leave school in the afternoon as well, so, just curious if adding another crosswalk would make an even more safer opportunity, area over there, but just wanted to have it looked into.
Well, we'll give that to Public Safety Person, Chairperson Novoselsky, and I'm sure he'll handle it appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Councilor Novoselsky that the following moratorium to the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere be ordered to a public hearing relative to a nine-month moratorium on. relative to a nine-month moratorium on the granting of special permits for lodging and rooming houses.
This is going to a public hearing? All in favor, all opposed? Councilor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I noticed in the paper that was a legal advertisement for requests for a license, in the License Commission, for two lodging houses in the city. One happened to be in my neighborhood, and the other one happened to be in Council Powers' neighborhood. And what I'm finding out is, since we don't have any rules and regulations about Airbnb, this is what people are trying to do. They're trying to take a multi-unit building and make all Airbnb facilities. Now, to me, anything over four units, you know, Airbnbs I can potentially live with, with some controls. And I think if we put a moratorium on issuing any lodging licenses for the next, we can develop ordinances to control Airbnb and be able to tax them, make sure their buildings are public safety secured, and it's also an issue on parking. So, I think there's a lot of issues in this, and I think this nine-month moratorium will give us time to put something together, and then we can go back to the lodging houses and Airbnb, which we have some guidance on now, which is one of your goals for the next six months, to control Airbnbs and get something on the books to make sure that we keep an eye on them and they don't get out of hand. So, I hope that we can move on this public hearing and make this moratorium a reality so we have time to do our work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. The public hearing, by the way, will be on February 25th. Councilor Zambuto.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support this in concept. I do hesitate. I want legal opinions on this. I don't want to end up with another TD video here. You know, we, we can laugh at that, but when you, when you make moves that, you know, there's people that have applied for stuff and now we're putting a moratorium in place, I just want to make sure we have the legal authority to do that, and we probably do, but I just want a legal opinion on that. But other than that, I'm certainly, I certainly see the merit of this, and I certainly would support it with that slight caveat. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree 100%. Actually, we do have the ordinances in place now with regard to public safety. There should be a means for the, particularly in a lodging house, for somebody from Inspection Services to go in there, make sure they have the smokes, the carbons, the aggressors, the lighting, and everything else that's required. And aside from that, also, the 6% room excise tax that should be coming to the city. If somebody's got 12 units in a building and they're using it as a lodging house where people come in and take a room for a week, or two weeks, or three weeks, whatever the case may be, to me, that's a hotel, and we should be getting some revenue back for that, and I will support that 100%. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Powers.
Mr. President, just a point of information.
Councilor Novoselsky.
Just to ease, Councilor Zambuto, those requests withdrawn from the License Commission because the lodging home, houses have to come through the zoning Subcommittee on the City Council, so nothing's on the records to come forward.
Well, what's going to happen after the public hearing on February 25th? This is going to be audited over to zoning Subcommittee so for further review, so we can do, we can critique it as best we could and make sure that we have something that will stand up in the court of law, and I think that's the way to represent our city. Thank you. Seeing no other business before us, we will be in adjournment until January 28th. Thank you for your attendance.